We're going to call to order a planning commission meeting for Wednesday, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, and it's like we're at forum. And Kiriam, can you go ahead and do the land acknowledgement?
Yes, we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Niswali Indian Tribe and the Squawson Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed and relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as a traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allow our nation, state, and city to develop as they have today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four.
Thank you. I'm looking for approval of the agenda for tonight.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Objection? Okay, so the agenda has been approved. I'm looking for approval of the February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five minute, meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Okay. Do we have anybody? It doesn't look like we have anybody here for public comment.
We don't have anybody that's registered, Chris, no public comment here, so no public comment tonight.
Okay, do we have any commissioner, commission members' reports tonight?
Kirian, um, you know, I, I would like to, the fact that we can see the city council meetings and participate virtually, and I just was really impressed um, with our chief, uh, Robert Almoda. He is absolutely doing amazing things in our city and making this a really great place. Uh, and I really wanted to commend, um, this administration for the fact that the crime in Lacey has been reduced by ten percent, which I think is amazing. And I think the use of force was, uh, one-tenth of a percent. So that is amazing, and it really makes sure that our city is, is welcoming, so. Yeah, it's a it's wonderful to, to see that from our people.
Amazing.
I'll, um, I had a chance to speak with the wait, I'm not sure exactly how, what their title was, but they're part of the Incident Support Unit with the Lacey Fire District Three, and they were talking about a lot of the mental health and emotional counseling services as well as just basic needs that they provide, not just to our community members, but the firefighters that may be on extended situations, fires where there can be out there for hours and hours at a time. And it is really heartening to hear the resources that they have at their disposal through donations, through community collaboration, businesses and organizations in the city providing those resources for families who lost everything, getting them the resources they need to keep going for a few days until they can get their feet under them. And so it was fantastic to see that that service has been not just incredibly well received from the fire department as well as the public, but it also helps, um, I just lost my train of thought. Fantastic program.
Anybody else? Okay, department report. Oh, I'm sorry, were you, did you have something, Robert?
Oh, no, sorry. I was just clearing my throat.
Okay, uh, department report?
Yeah, just one quick item tonight. So, um, last week, uh, Gail and I and, um, Mayor Ryder sat on a committee to interview, uh, potential candidates for our planning commission vacancy. Uh, we interviewed three individuals and, um, selected uh, one recommendation, uh, that the mayor's gonna take forward to the council. Uh, Jennifer Mangione, she lives out in, um, Murnee Campus area. You all might be familiar with Jennifer. She came to our open house, um, a month or so ago. Um, she is gonna be working towards her master's degree, I think, in urban planning at UDEP Tacoma, starting in the fall. So has a great interest in, in, uh, kind of planning topics and those kinds of things, and will, I'm sure, make a great, um, uh, planning commissioner. So, uh, she will likely be appointed by the council at their next meeting, which will be next week on March eighteenth. Um, and so she'll be at our next planning commission meeting on March twenty-sixth. So looking forward to having a full planning commission again. Um, and, um, you know, I think Jennifer is a representative of the city limits. So, um, as vacancies become available, we'll continue to try to, um, work on gaining another urban growth area m- member. Um, as they're allowed, kind of up to two by, by city ordinance. Right now, we're at one. Um, but it's more important, I think, to get a full planning commission than it is to have, you know, the, the UGA member filled. As the three that we did interview were all city, lived in the city limits, so we didn't have any opportunity to to even have one this time. So, um, yeah, we'll continue to, to, to stress the importance of UGA participation in the future. Announcements that we do for planning commission vacancies. But, yeah, looking forward to Jennifer coming on, uh, here in two weeks.
Great. There's no public hearing tonight, so we're on to new business.
No new business, there's just old business.
No new business, so we're on to old.
Just the oldest of business. So I'll, I'll just kind of give a real brief update and then turn it over to Tom. So, um, you all now have essentially gone through kind of every chapter of the updates to the public works, uh, the development guidelines and public work standards. Um, and so we are preparing to, um, get everything set for a future public hearing, um, coming up probably at the beginning of, of April. Um, but prior to doing that, Tom wanted to kind of brief you on some of the latest, um, uh, kind of, um, happenings, I guess, as far as the, the updates go. There was a meeting last night that, that Tom, um, enjoyed both, um, briefed the, the city council. And so I think Tom has some information on that, as well as some of the, kind of the outreach, the public, uh, the public outreach that has been done to, um, development groups and engineers and, and the like. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Tom to walk you through that.
Yeah, so it's been a while since we've seen you guys. And so, um, like Ryan's saying, we're currently working through, we sent out the guidelines for internal and external review. And through that process, um, so I'll go through external, just so you know, you know, here's, here's what we went through. I sent like, uh, personal emails to thirty-five consultants, engineers, developers to, uh, try to solicit comments, and I gave them the path through the website to get to the guideline updates and, uh, review them and make potential comments on, um, all of the, the proposed changes. Some of the, the people I sent it to, uh, public agency-wise, we also reached out to them. I reached out to Interstate Transit, Lacey Fire District Number Three, Master Builders, North Thurston Public Schools, uh, St. Martin's Lot, and then the representatives I knew at Thurston County. And so, um, along with the, it, with those thirty-five people, we also, for the first time, um, made it available to the public. So what we did is we put it on the website, and then we also sent out like an Instagram message and a Facebook's message saying, hey, here's your opportunity to, you know, comment. Um, so with all those folks, they all, all their messages would go to the same email address. A little disappointing, we, we only had really seven different people that, you know, responded. So currently where we have not started yet, um, that was through a three-week window. You know, so we gave people three weeks to look at it, which I thought was yeah, pretty, yeah, pretty long. Um, but what we're doing now is we're going through all the internal comments and those external ones, and we'll get them into the guidelines so that when we were shooting for, I think, April ninth for the public hearing. So we're, we need to have all those into there. So when you guys are reviewing the final version, you'll have all those comments in there that we said, yep, those, those should be in here. Um, so, uh, that's kind of the background of what we did. And then like last night, it wasn't as cool as the, the police chief's. Don't tease him. But, um, anyway, last night, we did have, you know, we went through the, the chapters, and really the, the, the chapter that we have some work to do on is still chapter four. And the, like, similar to when we had our discussions with you, you all, we, um, talked about, you know, the street trees and maintenance of street trees and all that. Well, one of the big sections in there was putting like, you know, all the restrictions of where street, street trees can be located. And in the meantime, since I think we met, we also did a field trip with like, I think Joey was there and Ryan and, and Hans, we were all, went out and we looked at, we went out to Bradley Park because it has, it's a pretty good example of, you know, it has some bio-retention in the swales. Um, it has tight housing, and, uh, we also went over to, um, thirty-nine, is that something?
Century Court.
Yeah, Century Court, there's another little neighborhood, and, um, we went there and looked at those. Through that observation, we were seeing that there really isn't room for street trees. And so moving that forward to last night, when we were having the discussion, um, there's council members that, they have strong concerns about that, you know, because of the environmental impacts of it, you know? Street trees are gonna, you know, cool off the asphalt and all that. So we really need to figure out what we're gonna do with street trees. So today, we were wrestling all day with, well, do we just pull chapter four out of this guideline update? Or do we move forward with it? And what we decided is that, um, you guys are gonna get all of the, the chapters ahead of time. I really want to encourage you to, you know, read them and anything that you're looking at that, like, I have concerns with these, to bring it up to the hearing, you know? So that we can, um, make a determination, you know, moving forward to council, we could say, this is what we, we recommend to, for approval with these exceptions that we think needs more consideration. And, um, we're already kind of thinking that that street tree piece is gonna be part of it. Um, the other thing is that we're currently, and you guys are at the forefront of this, we're currently doing our comp plan amendments. And through that, we're gonna be looking at the housing types, and that's gonna have a lot of effect, I think, on, you know, what our streets look like, you know? And so be, you know, in the back of your mind, know that we're gonna be having to do another guideline update, especially for chapter four, probably within a year, and, or hand in hand with the comp plan updates. So the, when I talked to the director today, it was like, there's a lot of changes in chapter four that were, they're minor, and so he'd like to see those, those changes move forward. But if there's anything in there that we're like, no, I, I'm not comfortable, then we will pull them from the approval that goes to council. So, um, I, I'm not gonna get into like, all the, you know, we've already gone through, these are the same bullet points that I went through with you earlier. So, um, I don't see a need to go into those again tonight. I just wanted to give you an update on, here's where we are, and, and that's really it. So, and unless, if you guys have any questions about, you know, the path forward or concerns.
We just love that you went out into the communities. I think that's, it's just so informative, you know? Yeah.
I want to be very transparent. It was our new community development director, Vanessa, that's like, we need to get out there and we need to look at this stuff. And so, and it was a comprehensive team. It was, it was public works and planning staff. And so we all got out there and we're like, yeah, this is a
It just takes it off the paper and into real life.
You get to see what this becomes.
It's terrific.
I, I think that's where we'll end up going with you guys in the future, like you guys and council. I think that's how we're gonna resolve these issues, because there's so many competing interests, like, you know, street trees, stormwater, you know, all the densities.
Developer demands.
Developer demands, yeah.
Big voice in the room.
Yep, yep. So all that's gonna come into play, and we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna, what's important and how are we gonna come to consensus, so.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll add on to a little bit. That, that may be, um, a future, um, bus tour item. Is that we actually, you know, it's probably not gonna be the full focus of a bus tour, but we may actually like, you know, go through a, a neighborhood and talk a little bit about, you know, what, what you're seeing in terms of the, you know, the, the competition for what, what goes in the right of way between, you know, the stormwater systems and the, the other utilities, the street lighting and the street trees and, and those kinds of things. And, and, um, so you can have that firsthand look as well. Um, because I think, you know, and I, I think, you know, this is the right approach, is that at this point, you know, when we're updating the comprehensive plan, we're, we're hearing about how essentially everything is important, right? And so like, more, more affordable housing, more, more density, uh, more uniqueness to neighborhoods, more kind of livable neighborhoods, more trees. You know, all these things add up to, well, we're, we're not just through this kind of development guideline update going to be able to, to tackle all this, because it affects more than just what goes in the right of way. It also could, um, affect things like, um, you know, lot layouts. Do you, like, in, in order, for example, to, in order to encourage more trees, do you say, um, a smaller lots can only be alley-loaded so that you have, you know, more area that's not just a driveway to put in street trees, as an example? In order to do that, we need to modify our zoning and subdivision codes, which aren't a part of the development guidelines. So all, all this is to say that, uh, as far as this part goes, you know, I think that there needs to be a comprehensive kind of look at all of the development regulations related to this issue, both the development guidelines and what appears in our Lacey Municipal Code, and, and, and do a future holistic update to that to reflect the community's priorities, reflect the council's priorities. And last night, I think, you know, going back and, and watching the video, you know, the council's priorities is still very much trees, and, and, you know, that, that's reflected very much in the community outreach that we've been doing. And so, you know, if that's the case, then, you know, right now, if you go out into some of these neighborhoods, you know, you see one tree here, and it maybe is a block and a half before you see the next street tree. It's not, it's not just that typical tree, you know, canopy that you maybe kind of think of in your head as being that, you know, those oak trees or whatever that are e- evenly spaced down the road, that's not the case. It's kind of these, you know, almost one-off areas that have the trees planted in them, which I don't think is necessarily the intent of, certainly not creating a good urban canopy. It's, you know, not, not providing maybe some of the benefits that we originally set out to achieve with requiring trees and, and the plan strip.
Well, and also, Ryan, I think there's just an epidemic of flag lots designed into communities, and that eats up space for trees. I mean, just cramming in three more houses down a strange off thing from a cul-de-sac. Those flag lots, it's, it's just kind of pure greed. You don't need three more houses in there, just make it green space, make it trees, make it bushes. And it's, it's, I've lived in six different states, and I've never seen so many flag lots crammed into developments as in Washington.
Yeah, and I mean, that brings up other, you know, other discussion points, which is like, are trees, should trees be more in open space? Should we require like more open space as a result with more trees installed? Um, rather than requiring, you know, trees to be put on every lot or, you know, those kinds of things. So it brings up a whole host of design issues that is kind of, has spurred a little bit of that discussion that I think needs to be, you know, handled through a, a separate process. So, um, you know, at this point, I think, you know, and, and, you know, we would probably make it clear in the, in the recommendation coming from the planning commission is that, you know, so the plan is that we'll hold a public hearing in April, but, um, you know, with the recommendation comes from the planning commission, the, the direction to the city council to open this up, to look at this holistically in a future work program item.
I think there's also value in, um, folks designing and approving roundabouts. About, about going into the field and seeing what that impact would be in the areas they're intending. Roundabouts don't fit everywhere, as ideally as they do in the design.
Yep, and that's, uh, you know, you can point to the update to our transportation element of our comprehensive plan that, you know, is, is currently i- in development. So, um, there's, there's work underway to, you know, make things more, uh, we, we, and we're required to by the state, re- reduce vehicle miles traveled, um, which means that we need more pedestrian bicycle infrastructure and those kinds of things. So, um, there, there's a lot to, I mean, at, at, you know, at the base level, it's like, oh, well, we just need more street trees in neighborhoods. Well, then that creates a whole cascade of other issues that are beyond just, well, street trees is part of it, but, uh, you know, gets to a larger issue around neighborhood design and all the things we already talked about, so.
Anything else? Thanks, Tom.
Yep, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Let's hopefully see you on April ninth.
Yeah, and just, um, I know there's gonna be some folks that are new to the planning commission, just so you're aware. We do start the meeting up at the dais. So, um, uh, we're not expecting that this is going to be in any way a contentious public hearing, but it is a little bit more formal. Um, and so, you know, we'll be up at the dais to, to start the meeting. Um, and, you know, anybody will give comment from the, the lectern there, and, and, um, so just if you see a little bit different layout, that's, that's what that is. But you're, as far as the mechanics of the meeting and everything, it's all kind of the same. And, you know, we would, uh, um, after the public hearing, probably at that point, uh, recommend that the planning commission, commission make a recommendation on this to the city council, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
That was speeding. Now a little bit more than.
And all the problems are solved, so.
They're just stick down the road. Oh, by the way, I'll just say, well, Tom will be back. I'm, I'm not gonna say it. I'll, I'll wait. Tom's getting ready to retire, so we're, we're gonna have to tell him a lot, but he'll be, he'll be back for April ninth, so.
I will be here in April ninth.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thirty, thirty-one and a half years here at City.
Great service.
Yeah, thanks. All right.
Thanks, yes.
All right. Uh, so this is a continuation of, uh, comp plan-related topics that we're gonna run through. Uh, this night, we're actually gonna be focusing, uh, purely on rezoned requests uh, that we've received through this process. So, in a traditional format, so outside of the comprehensive plan, we do have a methodology in place for when somebody is interested in pursuing a rezon uh, that we normally work through that process. Uh, step one of that process being that there will be some kind of initial contact where the applicant would reach out to staff, and we would kind of walk through the, the things that, uh, as staff, and then as planning commission, and then as council, we're kind of thinking about when considering a, uh, rezon request. A lot of that has to do with kind of consistency with adjacent uses, uh, what the long-term vision is for that kind of site. Um, but assuming that in that initial conversation, that there's no immediate hurdles that are identified, that's then typically advanced on to, uh, planning commission and council to be docketed, uh, which actually happens in our current system, uh, at the beginning of each year. So it's a, it's a once opportunity per year cycle that takes place. Uh, as part of that docketing, uh, there will be some additional review that takes place, uh, just to really kind of familiarize, uh, both planning commission and council with the location, uh, just to get a little bit more in detail as far as what we're looking at. And then assuming that from there, uh, council kind of gives the go-ahead to include this within the work plan for the year, then we would go through the full-blown, uh, kind of site analysis and do a lot more of that in-depth kind of granular review of that location, uh, for its broader consistency with, uh, land use, with our comprehensive plan, with all of our other adopted goals, policies, housing plans, transportation plans, making sure that it's just really consistent all across the board. Uh, before, planning commission would then ultimately, uh, make a recommendation. It would get elevated to council, and then council would adopt it. That's kind of the, the process that normally takes place for a rezon request. And that typically takes around six to nine months, uh, start to finish. The, there is an application that is specific to that. Uh, it contains, you know, information on site details, compatibility with adjacent uses, uh, challenges with the existing zoning, so really kind of justification behind why that rezon is being requested in the first place. Um, and this is all applicant, uh, information that is provided. It's not staff, it's not, uh, anybody else is doing that legwork, so that's something that comes in with the application. Uh, but it's really kind of looking at the existing designated zoning and what's being requested as far as the proposed zoning, and really kind of looking at those, um, to see how they both would function within that location, and if there's a better use that's not currently being accomplished. And then there's also an analysis of the total quantity of that zone versus the proposed one throughout the entirety of the community. So making sure that if whatever's being proposed does take place, that we still have an adequate supply of that other zone still remaining left over to accommodate, uh, those future uses. And then I already kind of talked about consistency of other plans. Uh, and then also part of that is a list of adjacent property owners. So anytime that a rezon, uh, moves forward, everybody in, uh, immediate surroundings of that area gets notified about that, uh, so that they have an opportunity to participate in that review process and weigh in and provide feedback along the way as well. Um, this year, it's a little different. So, uh, normally we get around, uh, two to three applications, uh, a year, just on a normal, uh, rolling cycle. Uh, this year, we did kind of put it out to the community as part of the comprehensive plan update process, that there would be an opportunity, uh, to, uh, have the rezon process kind of be worked into the comprehensive plan update. Uh, and there was a little bit more publication outreach involved in that. And we actually got forty-eight different requests, so definitely more than what we're familiar or used to, I should say. Uh, but di- distribution, uh, we did it through the city website, we did it through planning counter, social media, community events, and then also the survey. It was actually, there was a link at the end of the two thousand and twenty-four community survey where once folks kind of concluded that, there actually was an opportunity to move on and actually jumped into the rezon application, uh, platform that we had built that was specific for the cycle. Given the amount of time that we have, I don't anticipate that we're gonna carry forward all forty-eight of those, uh, applications. But right now, what we're looking at tonight is essentially a rubric that's gonna help us prioritize the ones that we want to carry forward as part of the comprehensive plan process that's gonna conclude at the end of this year, and those that may warrant additional review, so being pushed out to two thousand and twenty-six or beyond. Um, the decisions that we make aren't gonna necessarily mean that, yes, this rezon is gonna take place or not. It's just whether or not it's gonna take place as part of the comprehensive plan process. So with that in mind, uh, we created kind of draft evaluation criteria. And I split this into two different categories. The first category is kind of pass/fail category. Uh, and this is really those high-level kind of issues. If the request doesn't really meet these, it's not something that we should probably spend our time on as part of comprehensive plan, working to incorporate into this process. So, basic elements here, so within the city, it's gotta be within the city, uh, active code violations or issues. We want to make sure that what we're taking a look at doesn't currently have any kind of other ongoing planning, building department, land use issues going on with it that may warrant additional review. Um, we also want written requests from the owner that they are actually, in fact, interested in this. Uh, what we found by putting the platform out there is that there were people submitting uh, rezon requests for properties that were not theirs. So we, uh, once we run all the requests through kind of the initial kind of scoring criteria, and we get kind of two different groups, what have you, uh, we want to make sure that we do in fact have, uh, some kind of requests from the owner that that is in fact something that they're interested in pursuing. Reduction in land use, uh, or capacity, so as part of this, uh, update cycle, um, yeah, making sure that any requests that come in are not necessarily going to devalue or down uh, grade the, uh, the potential uses on a site. So that's not to say that that's not something that could be pursued in the future, but it is just something that would typically involve an additional level of review or higher level of analysis that we don't have capacity to do as part of this year. So that would be something that would likely get bumped out to two thousand and twenty-six as part of a, uh, private applicant-led process. And then identified as a city priority, and this is a little bit of a different one, but really this is kind of a catch-all for, we have parkland right now that's owned by the city, but has a residential designation to it. So just cleaning up some of those kind of things that need to be addressed as part of a normal update cycle that we would take a look at. So that's kind of its own standalone. Um, but these are the pass/fail ones that we pulled together. We do have some kind of broader categories, but are there any questions on these ones so far? Any thoughts, additions, things that should be there that are currently missing? Additions, things that should be there that are currently missing?
Not that are supposed to be there, so with, it looked like the preponderance of those rezone requests were coming from people who weren't the owners. I was going under the presumption that these were maybe registered agents acting on their behalf. Is, is that information listed in the document when they submit that?
Yeah, so as part of the, uh, process to submit a location, there is a field that, uh. Folks can fill out that provides their contact information and who they are in relation to the property. Uh, so that is captured in there and you are right that some of the feedback that we did receive was from representatives of property owners. Uh, so we just, as part of this, before we carry something all the way through to the end and find out that the property owner is still kind of. Maybe not fully involved or has mixed feelings on it, we just want to make sure that. Uh, we do have contact with the property owner and that they are kind of fully in favor of the rezone. Otherwise, that would be something that would, uh, probably be, uh, pushed out to twenty twenty-six or beyond and. Let them really kind of leave that process in the future when that determination is made.
Would that be an adversarial process if, let's say, a community came together and submitted that application because they didn't like. How a zoning was in the middle of their neighborhood, let's say, for, they wanted to make a community center, something of that nature, but the property owner was. Not on board or the HOA wasn't on board, is that something that could be forced through? Or would that be something that's gonna be shut down because the property owner is not?
So that would likely be something that would be flagged as something that requires additional review and consideration. That would not be carried forward as part of this process. Uh, and then at that point. Of the forty-eight different locations that have been identified, ones that aren't carried forward as part of the comprehensive plan process. They all have the opportunity to reapply as part of the normal application process. It just wouldn't be housed within the comprehensive plan update. So that would be in twenty twenty-six or beyond, the thing that we're gonna be taking a look at.
And I think, so that's right, what you're talking about is conceivable, um, that, for example, a neighborhood could say, hey, we want. You know, this corner lot to be zoned something else against the wills of the property owner. But it would have to be an extremely high community priority at that point, like the, the, you know, the, the benefit over. Outweighs the, the, you know, the property owner's. Vision for the future of that property. Because we have so many, like at this point, we have to make cuts and, and so, you know, we can't just, those would be, you know. They would take a, a, a high amount of staff time and, and, you know, uh, things to, to, to make that happen. And so at this point, you know, we have to make the cut somewhere. And so we want to make sure that we have property owner buy-in as, as, you know, part of that. You know, making that cut. Um, but, but it is conceivable and that's what the comprehensive plan process is about, is asking those questions. Hey, is this zone right, you know? Um, and so, you know, there, there, there could be some ones that are community suggested. There probably are some that are community suggested within our, our list and the, you know, we're, we're looking at the scoring rubric tonight. In the future meeting in two weeks, we'll go through the actual applications and you may see some of those.
And by making a determination one way or another on whether or not any one of these makes it through the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan process is not necessarily, uh, a statement against that reason. It's just a recognition that there is. Additional review that deserves to be had, uh, that we just don't have the capacity for as part of this cycle, catch up, so. Yeah, and then, so the second half of this, sorry. Uh, are there any other comments on this? Any additions, retractions, things that should or shouldn't be there that you can think of? All right. So the other half of this is more of a scoring, uh, criteria that we created and we did include this in your packet. I have these broken out, so we'll look at them individually. Um, but really, and we're. How the point values or rubric is intended to work and given it's a still draft that we're, we're trapping and hoping for your. Guys' feedback here is that, uh, a score of zero really represents that there are some kind of major issues or inconsistencies. With whatever's being proposed, whether or not that's. Uh, inconsistencies with comprehensive plan or council stated priorities or objectives, things like that. And at the other end of the spectrum, uh, we see things that would potentially fully meet or exceed expectations with no significant issues. So when we're looking at this chart, uh, kind of the score, scoring criteria across the top. Uh, that's what that kind of, each one of those scores represents. And there is nuance, so there are scores in the middle where something might not be. You know, exactly what we're looking for and it might not, um, be terrible, but it'll land somewhere in the middle, kind of, so. Uh, with that, uh, the top one of the kind of point value side is the amount of current, uh, and proposed zoned. Undeveloped land available. Uh, so I did reference that earlier as part of the normal application process, but really what that's getting at is. Uh, if a property is to be changed from one designation to another. Does that original designation still have enough land available to accommodate that type of use in other areas of the communities? Making sure that we still have the right balance of land uses across the entirety of the city. So if we're really kind of fully built out on one, one type of use. And we're trying to get rid of that land use, um, that's probably something that wouldn't score well because we want to make sure that we have enough capacity for that. Use in the future.
Do, do we have established guidelines for what numbers, percentages, ratios, whatever metric we're using to measure that?
So within our, uh, rezone application process, we have kind of these high category buckets. But we don't have hard metrics attached to them as far as like what percentage we're looking for. It's more, and, and that's typically something that would be applicant provided, so we have kind of a list of things that the applicant would have to provide as part of. Uh, rezone application and part of that is includes justification where they're talking about. Why the current zone is not the best fit for that site and. Part of that, they also have to identify kind of the existing, um, amount of land dedicated to each one of those uses. So, but as far as like a hard percentage, we don't have that. It's more on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, and so, um, what, what we'll do is, you know, like I said, in the future meeting, bring you like what kind of, you know, here's the points and how they laid out. What, what we'll need to do as staff is do more work looking at, okay, how does this potential zoning change affect the amount of. Um, available zone property one way or the other. So this is just giving us, again, just a, a high-level look of what's available. And then as we move these applications forward, then it'll be up to us as staff to lead kind of the technical analysis behind, um, you know, these. The decision-making, so, so, you know, it's not, there's no bright line thresholds at this point. Um, it's, it's more of a kind of, you know. High-level look at what's available and, and basing it on that, so. Um, but as we get, you know, we'll have to make sure that we're, you know, we still have adequate buildable lands and, you know, to be able to accommodate future populations and all that stuff. Um, as we move through the application process.
One follow-up on that, with our potential to reduce the number of zones from, I believe it was thirty-four, down to something a little more simpler. With that invalidate, adding these to the comprehensive plan until we establish that beforehand?
So we do have the, uh, kind of the pass fail categories and we have, uh, some later on that get into that a little bit. So like, one of the examples is our. Uh, moderate density corridors, I think what it's called. Uh, and we're looking at, that one, actually, if we look at our old code before we did the neighborhood commercial, uh, district update. Um, they were actually modeled after each other, so they're already very similar to begin with. And we only have, I think, one of those locations that actually exists within the city. We have another one that's in our urban growth area. So examples like that might be something where we actually consolidate those zones and eliminate. So that is something we were taking a look at.
It's one I was trying to visualize, do, what, what is the location so that I can get a better picture of that, that meets the medium density commercial?
Yeah, so we have one that's in the urban growth area, um, it's on the corner of Pacific.
Union Mills?
Yeah, so that's that, uh, I believe. Yeah, and then we have another one that's over by North Thurston High School, I think just north of North Thurston.
Yeah, on Slater County, and that's where there's a daycare at the intersection of Sixth Avenue and Slater County. Yep, so they're kind of already operating as like little neighborhood centers anyway, some neighborhood commercial in there and, you know, daycares, small grocery stores, so. Um, they're, there's a very, they're very similar in a lot of aspects. And so through this, you know, process, we will be able to, uh, do some. Consolidation, so it would, it would happen as a part of the, the zoning update.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, something we're definitely thinking about, um, and where those opportunities exist, uh, we'll look at ways to. Take advantage of that. But yeah, any other comments on this one so far? Nope, and then so, uh, at one end of the spectrum, we have, uh, no undeveloped land available for existing zoning. Um, so whatever that current zoning might be, that there's really nothing left beyond that, so that might be a reason that we would give that a lower score. And then at the other end of the spectrum, it might be something like significant undeveloped land available for existing zoning. So there's many other places where that type of use could be accommodated throughout the communities. And then the next one here is unusable under a current designation, so, um. For whatever reason, uh, whatever's being proposed really just isn't possible, uh, in that location as that zoning. So, uh, the zoning may conflict with the actual geographic location as far as what, what is allowed within the zoning designation and what is possible. Physically on the ground based on a variety of other physical characteristics as far as access or proximity or location compared to other things. Um, so that's that second one, and again, this is also kind of borrowed from the rezone application. Just trying to flesh them out a little bit and give them a little bit more of a criteria behind it. So we don't have those percentages, but just trying to. Kind of make it more of a methodical process, if you will. But at one of the, end of the spectrum, we have something like a property is, uh, optimal for a current zoning designation. Uh, which wouldn't really give it a score towards rezoning versus at the other end of the spectrum, we might see something like property is completely. Uh, unusable under current zoning designation, and then there are different, uh, degrees in between. Any thoughts, questions on this one? All right, and then, uh, spot rezone, adjacent use consistency, so this is. Spot rezones are actually something that's not legal, um, but that would be, say, like, taking one parcel that's surrounded by residential. And turning it to commercial or something like that. It's a very extreme example of that, but that's kind of what a spot rezone would be in definition. So, um, and then to a lesser extreme, kind of maybe, uh. Three of the four sides of a property might have very different, uh, uses adjacent to it than what's being proposed, so. Uh, that might be something like rezone is in inconsistent with adjacent uses. Um, and then at the other end of that spectrum might be rezone is consistent with adjacent land uses and surrounding zoning. So at one location, I think we have some open space institutional land, uh, that's fully surrounded by residential. But it's, it's, uh, the park, it used to actually be held for a church, I believe. Um, but that church has since, uh, identified that that's not a piece of property that they want to do anything with. Uh, so there's, I believe there's an application on it where it's asking just to revert to residential. Uh, instead of being held in that open space institutional designation. So that's kind of an example of what that one is. Uh, and then the next one here is critical areas. Um, and again, this is really just gauging our level of time that we have to. Dedicate to these things, so. In most, uh, vacant locations within the city, there will be some form of a critical area at this point. We're just kind of at that point as far as development goes. Um, but recognizing that, uh, rezone applications with critical areas on them are going to warrant a higher level of review. Than probably what we have time and capacity for as part of the comprehensive plan update. So for this one, property contains significant critical areas, um, some kind of either wetlands, flood zones, creeks, what have you. Deep slopes. Uh, and at the other end of the spectrum is property has no critical areas or environmental restrictions. So whether or not we want to carry it forward as part of this review process, uh, we would definitely lean towards, uh, less critical areas. The more just for the amount of time that we would want to dedicate to those sites.
Why do you have, the other one had like three designations, but this one has the five. So what was the reasoning between few, some?
Yeah, so for this one, it felt like the, just the, the extremes is really kind of what we were focusing on. So spot rezone's just not legal right out of the gate, um, so we're not gonna allocate any, uh, points for that. Um, a rezone is somewhat consistent, so that might mean that like two of the sides of the parcel. Assuming we're talking about rectangles, but for simplicity here, so two of the sides might have, uh, high density and two of the sides have low density. So that's not necessarily fully inconsistent, but it's also not, you know, a great, uh. Uh, use for that, so it's, it's balancing those. There might be a middle, middle tier in there.
So that's why I was trying to figure out, how is that middle tier assessed in the critical areas?
Yeah, so critical areas, um, likely the, the locations that are identified within this, we haven't been able to do a full review of them yet. Um, but the assumption is that there is likely gonna be critical areas on most of the sites that are being proposed. So we did want to kind of expand that out a little bit to give us a little bit more of a opportunity to kind of define differences between different sites.
Oh, I don't see wellheads. Is this something, are the, um, is that something that's being considered as a critical area?
Yeah, all of our, all of our critical areas would factor into that consideration. And then based on that, we have maps that we can toggle on and off. And then quickly look at each one of these sites. And I will say that this is still intended to be a kind of ten thousand foot, uh, analysis of all these sites. We're still not getting into the, kind of the details. Uh, if a site is something that's starting to look more and more like we really do need to get into the details on it, that would be a likely reason that we would probably push it out to a. Twenty twenty-six or beyond review, just because we don't have the time to get that granular with every one of these sites, so. Looking forward, the ones that we probably do end up recommending are gonna be the ones that are pretty simple. Uh, don't have a lot of issues with them, score pretty well through this. Um, and again, that's not necessarily a, a score against it. It's just recognizing that we only have limited capacity and for those sites, we want to spend more time on them so we get it right.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Uh, consistent, consistency with the comp plan, um, this is another one that only really has three tiers. Uh, we can add more, um, but just at, at first go, it didn't feel like it needed it. Um, at one end of the spectrum, we have, it's just fully inconsistent with what we're trying to do with the comp plan. At the other end, it's, rezone is fully consistent with what we're trying to do, uh, what the community's kind of expressed through this process, what we've heard. Uh, what we're striving to be, and then there is that, uh, middle tier, which is rezone is somewhat consistent, so. A lot of times when we do see a rezone come in, they probably land in that second tier, so that there are definitely goals and policies that the rezone can point to. As justification, but there are other ones that might not perfectly align with what they're trying to do, so. We do see some of that, so that is why that we created that. But again, trying to make it so that we can do these reviews quickly. Uh, we just want to be able to kind of look at it, decide how consistent it is, and then kind of give it a score and move forward. That's what we're looking at for that one. And then, uh, transportation and infrastructure, uh, availability or access. So again, this one's just looking at the location specifically, making sure that it has adequate access, that it has. Utilities in place to support whatever the proposed new zoning might be. Um, there's a lot of. Areas in our community that may have like a lot of wetlands or streams around them and providing utility access to those locations is very difficult. So if a rezone came in and was asking for a pretty intense level of use that, uh, would then require those. Um, resources to be extended, uh, that would be something that would probably score pretty low on the, the scale versus something that just has all of those. Um, utilities in place, uh, next to the parcel, uh, would probably score at the other end of that spectrum. So that's what we're talking about for that one. All right, so I just ran through all of those, but, um, do you guys have any thoughts, questions, ideas on things that might be missing? Things that we should add, remove?
Just curious, I know, you know, the pass fail is pretty cut and dry. Are there any, is there anything or any one of these criteria which would automatically kind of just put. Into the no pile, like, is there anything that's weighted or is, or, or is this weighted pretty evenly where in theory people could do? You know, fairly poorly and maybe the pass fail, but like really great in the other areas and, and still make it to the top of the pile?
I think that if they don't make it through the pass fail, uh, they're probably not gonna get advanced beyond that.
Okay.
Uh, I think that we're, given we haven't run these, uh, uh, locations through the, uh, rubric yet, cause we're kind of building it. Um, so once we get this guidance from you, we will take all of the, the locations and run them through this. And then I imagine that we're really gonna only be taking, you know, the really, the, the ones that score really well. Um, even the ones that are probably in that mid, middle tier, I imagine that just based on capacity and the amount of time that we have. Those will probably still remain in that recommended for a future year cycle.
So your thought would be that they would pass all five of these criteria to be even considered?
Yeah, so we're probably gonna have to take a couple example properties and run them through this and get a sense of how it works. And then we might adjust scores according to that. Um, there will be a little bit of fine tuning once we, once we get guidance from you guys on what criteria. Uh, make the most sense, but, um, yeah.
So if I'm the person on the other end.
So if I'm the person on the other end of this, I'm putting in my zoning um request. What is my opportunity to intervene after the initial score has been assigned? Do I, do you call me and say, I'm sorry, you're you're a zero or you're not getting anywhere with this? Or do you um, do you say we need more clarification on X, Y, and Z? Or or do you not go back to the applicant at this point?
Yeah, so once we get guidance on the rubric, uh, we'll likely be uh sharing that rubric. Along with reaching out to all those properties to confirm that, for example, we have owner uh desire to actually pursue the rezon, things like that. So there there, we do have a list of contacts uh that submitted the rezon requests. And using that, we'll reach out to all of the potential owners or people that submitted those requests and then have that dialogue with them uh moving forward.
Have you, have you taken some prior approved rezon requests and run it through this to see if it? Would make the grade or not?
Uh, not yet. We don't have any that are uh previously approved yet, so. Um, that's, that's going to be the next step in this process is really taking. Um, probably some that are likely to go through like those ones that are owned by the city that currently have residential designation. Uh, we've kind of structured the pass fail category to ensure that those made it through. Um, as far as the the rest of the criteria, we haven't run through that yet. As far as how maybe a piece of parks land would score, for example, on that. But um, once we do get those scores, then we can kind of weight it or kind of figure out where that um cut line might be that makes sense. And I do have. Yeah, so I did, and given you'll notice the scores are not in there yet. Uh, but we did kind of create a hierarchy um scoring summary. So once we run some of these through, then we'll kind of figure out what makes sense as far as that a top score. But that might be in like the fifty plus points and I'm making this up a little bit here at this point. But say you score fifty or above for that top one, and then the middle one might be like thirty to forty, something like that on down. Um, but strong case for approval may require additional review or conditions, uh, concerns uh that need to be addressed. And then uh significant issues, uh, I anticipate will probably only be carrying forward either. A strong case for approval, we might uh look at some of the other ones, but just based on capacity, that's probably gonna be where we're at. Um, we got forty eight applicants this year and normally we're working with around two. So we gotta, we gotta cut some out. And again, that's, you know, not to say that they're not justified and worth further consideration. It's more just a recognition of our capacity.
I, I was curious about those forty two because I'm looking at some of the addresses are repeated. Is that just someone not realizing they like resubmitting it accidentally or are they two like splitting lots and doing two different things or?
Yeah, so I think it's a little bit of both. Uh, we did have like the owners would reach out and then they also brought on. Um, some kind of consultant or representative to help them through the process and they may have also submitted. Uh, we have some that are cover larger areas, so it's not just a specific parcel, but it maybe is like multiple parcels. Um, and in those cases, it might have just been like that parcel was used as the kind of central location uh to kind of cover the larger area. But we'll have, we'll have a probably a map or something to go along with this stuff moving forward as well. I hope kind of orient folks and get familiar with it when we do that.
Are any of these specifically for the ones that are submitted for the same address or any of them from competing interests? Or did the same. Property owner submit two different requests for a rezon?
Yeah, I, we haven't gone into that level of review yet. So we're trying to create a rubric and then from there, then we'll start contacting uh the owners. And starting to run it through just the high level. And given this is, this is not intended to be a comprehensive review, this is kind of just a. A little bit of a quick and dirty, just kind of, we need to, we need to make two buckets, one that we're carrying forward this year and one that we would recommend for further review next year. Um, so that's really what the intent of this tool is. It's not, at the end of the this review, we're still probably gonna have some. Decent amount of questions about each one of these locations. Uh, it's just so that we can create two different categories and best allocate our time to to the ones that we have the ability to move forward.
I think my only concern would be with some of the um. The sort of descriptive words like minimal versus few, those kinds of things. It it it, you know, those are much in the eye of the beholder and um. I, I don't know how you're going to ensure consistency between reviewers. But it seems to me that that's a challengeable point at some. Some, some in future time unless, unless you can somehow internally develop a scale. You know, do you know what I mean? And I realize it's very difficult to do that, but uh it's. You know, what's, what is the difference between minimal and few?
For sure. No, I I understand the point. Um, yeah, and that is something we're gonna have to figure out uh as we move forward in this. I was getting kind of, it's, when, when we have a normal rezon application that comes through outside of this process. It is really kind of on a site by site basis and we really are making those judgment calls to some degree. Um, and ideally you create enough kind of criteria or metrics that they are kind of either in align with enough of them. Where they rise to the top and not achieve that recommendation status or they don't. Um, so again, it's trying to, trying to create enough criteria where we can kind of quickly run through, get a sense of what's going on. And then at least with that sense, be able to make a recommendation or not. Um, and yeah, some of the, no matter what we do, we are going to run into some of that. And I think the goal of this is really just to uh make it so that we can quickly look at sites.
So that you have some internal consistency. I think that's really. That it it hinges on that because if somebody says, oh, you know, five is, five is few, but somebody else says five is minimal. Or, you know, it's gonna be, it's going to be difficult to justify putting them in one bucket or another.
Yeah, I definitely agree with that. I think we're, what we're gonna do is, once we get kind of conclusion of this conversation, we're gonna take those locations, run them through this process. Uh, we'll do that internally as staff, but then we'll be sharing those results with all of you as planning commission. And then we'll have a discussion about each one of those locations and how they score with this admittedly imperfect uh methodology. That we're kind of creating on the fly here because we don't really have an established process for all of these currently. So we're creating it so that we can create those two buckets. Yeah, dude.
And then I, AI will do this all for you.
Yeah, if only.
I would just consider if if pass fail is truly pass fail, I don't know if it necessarily needs to be part of the scoring. It almost feels like it should be step one, right? If, if you, if you answer no to, you know, maybe you're allowed one out of the five. You'll eventually figure that out, but either zero or one, like I don't, all we're doing is bloating all the scores by twenty five. If we give our four times five twenty, we know math, uh, twenty points if we don't. So just something to consider is kind of like step A can be the pass fail. If we get any no's, like you're just in the twenty twenty six pile and like, so sorry, um, you know.
And I think our, yeah, I definitely agree. I think all of these started in that. One through five scale range or one through four, we turned one into zero because we didn't want to allocate points or something or you weren't consistent. So if it's not abundantly clear, we're uh, we're creating this as we go here. So this, and then we realized that really it mattered.
I think it's great.
So, yeah, so those are the one through five or the past fails or originally actually one through fives and then one through fours. And then there's like, really, there's only two scenarios here as far as what we care about for this review.
Part of this too will be ultimately amendments. Do you want to maybe stop Sharon? Ultimately amendments to the land use map because we want to make sure, so again, we're talking about zoning tonight. But there's even a step that's kind of a little bit of bomb zoning, which is the future land use maps that you guys have been looking at. So um, we will need to make sure that as we move these rezon applications forward, that there also, there's consistency with the land use maps. But also, these applications may give us some indications of where we may need to make some adjustments to some of those land use maps. So that that could maybe support future uh rezon applications. So um, you know, that, that's something to to keep in mind too, is the idea with doing a future land use map is that it's going to. Kind of lessen some of the burden to a a future rezon application. Because in the past years, you know, we'd only been doing this on the, on an annual basis because essentially our, our zoning and our comp plan were one. And so in order to do a zoning change, you also had to update the comp plan. Um, now we're, we're se- separating those two. You have a comp plan map and you have a zoning map. So we need to make sure that, you know, some of this stuff is going to be, you know, in the, in the comp plan map. So that a future application would be supported by what, what's in that land use map as well. So, you know, while a, a, an application may not make the list for what we take forward. We may look at doing some, you know, land use map uh uh adjustments that would support a future land use or future zoning change. So somebody could apply and would be supported by what the land use map um says that the future land use is gonna be. So, so it's not all for nothing, right? That's, I guess that's the thing is like, even if we tell people, well, you didn't make the list, there's, there's work we can be doing. Um, like adjustments to land use map that would eventually support a a rezon in that location. It's just, you know, and and I think too, the, the general public, property owners are, you know, especially for those, these ones that are going to be the highest priority. That we take forward, they're benefiting, they're not paying any money, they're benefiting from the staff leading these applications through this comprehensive plan update process. So um, you know, they're, they're, they're gonna be pretty lucky in a lot of respects. Because their application is a high enough city priority where we're gonna take this on and lead it, lead it through. Um, and um, so there, you know, there's some benefit, there will be a lot of benefit to those. There will be some that probably will be disappointed that they didn't make the list, but we can maybe look at some of the land use maps and see how those can be adjusted to accommodate. For a future potential rezon. There's one other thing that I was gonna mention as well, but it just escaped me. So be able to come back around on the hamster wheel.
Yeah, um, that's, that's everything I have for you guys tonight, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just schedule.
Just schedule? Next meeting is March twenty sixth. Anything break it of the order?
Estimated that one of the main price processes that they were going through was reduction of use of nine one one for inappropriate uses. And they estimate that between sixteen hundred and eighteen hundred calls annually have been reduced by the two staff members that they have on board. By counseling people, giving them resources and access to these things. So they're not calling because they can't get out of their chair, right? And uh, they estimate that saves about two thou- two million dollars because they would need a whole other aid unit fully staffed to handle that volume. So, yeah, it was pretty wonderful.
It's amazing. It's amazing. So we will see everybody on the twenty sixth.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then anybody that wants, you can leave your iPads with us and we'll, we'll take them up.
Say more about that. I missed that in the beginning. Cause I actually have a sign in issue with mine.
You know who's the sweetest?
Aaron's confident that they'll know.
Yeah, they have all the.
They're connected to. Feels weird, but I'm gonna leave it here.